If you're willing and able, would you be so kind as to stand for the invocation? Remain standing for the flag, and I will produce a correction and introduce to you David, Pastor Dave Riley from Cornerstone Baptist Church in McDonnell. Reverend Wiley, thanks for doing this.
Good, you're welcome. Let's pray together. God in heaven, we thank you that you are the giver of all good things, and we thank you, Lord, that you bless us in so many ways. We're so blessed and thankful, God, and especially we're thankful of that this time of the year as we remember that, Lord, as well. We ask, God, as you give us all things that you'd give this meeting and these commissioners and our leaders, the wisdom that you so promised us when we listened to you, I pray, God, that you would bless each person here and whatever issues they have, and we thank you, Father, for hearing us and loving us the way you do. Again, Lord, we thank you for the promises that you make us. We thank you, God, for all that you do bestow upon us. Bless this meeting now, we pray, in your name we ask these things. Amen.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015 meeting. Acceptance of the agenda. If you'll notice, the ones, the board members here, we've had some cancellations. Number one is recognition of master gardeners for the Henry County. They want to be taken off the agenda, they weren't quite ready. Another item here in red, number 10, request to address the board of commissioners by Steve Richardson. He asked this morning to be removed, so he will not be visiting with us. And county manager, resolution to enter into professional services agreement between Henry County and Signet, on-site help, has been removed. So having said that, if somebody would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Have a motion District 3. Second District 1, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Next, we'll recognize a proclamation recognizing Henry County Acts of Kindness, and our Communication Director, Melissa Thompson, will present this, and I think we may have a picture with some representatives, is that correct?
I was under the impression that someone would be here to receive the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, we have a proclamation recognizing Kindness Works Week in Henry County, which runs from November 9th through November 15th, 2015, whereas random acts of kindness are the expression of our empathy and compassion for one another, and whereas the annual Kindness Works Pass It On week-long celebration is in conjunction with National Kindness Week, commencing on Monday, November 9th, 2015, and continuing through Sunday, November 15th, 2015. And whereas, Henry County, Georgia will celebrate acts of kindness by encouraging schools, churches, employees, and community groups to participate in Kindness Works Week Pass It On. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of November 9th through November 15th, 2015, be known as Kindness Works Pass It On Week in Henry County, and urges all residents of Henry County to join in celebrating and performing acts of kindness during the week of November 9th through the 15th. Proclaimed this third day of November, 2015, signed by Chairman Tommy N. Smith and witnessed by Stephanie Braun, County Clerk. And I don't know if we do have somebody here.
Somebody here going to receive this? Please rise.
So we'll take a picture at another time.
Okay, we'll just take a picture.
Oh, okay.
Will that work? Bruce. Good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all this morning?
Fine, thank you.
My name is Sarah Visser. I'm the Executive Director for the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, and I'm here because I had the pleasure of meeting several of you down at the ACCG meeting that was down in Jekyll Island just recently, and we got to talking about an affiliate and what that means to have a local affiliate. To give you a little bit of background, Keep Georgia Beautiful is a statewide nonprofit organization affiliated with Keep America Beautiful, which is a national nonprofit organization, and we work on litter prevention, waste reduction and recycling, community beautification, and water resource management. We have the largest network of local affiliates in the country here in Georgia. We have 78 other communities that are affiliates, and we cover about 80% of Georgia's population. Henry County did have an affiliate at one time, and some of y'all may remember that. It's been a number of years ago, I think it was about 10 years ago, and as I remember what happened, there was a private recycler in the county that was actually operating as the affiliate, and when that recycler went out of business, then the affiliate fell by the wayside as well. And so I know that's something y'all have had in the past. We would love to have you as an affiliate again. I think the big thing to know about affiliation and about the way that Keep America Beautiful and Keep Georgia Beautiful work is that it is a behavior change process. And so one thing that I'm sure y'all know is that I could have brought a bag for everyone in this room, we could have gone out, we could clean up litter all day today, we could do the same thing tomorrow, we could do it all week long, and we still would not successfully address the problem. It really takes a group that is strategically focused on behavior change, and that's really what Keep America Beautiful offers, is that methodology to help you implement that in your community. You do have a packet of information, including some of the cost-benefit information, what is the value in becoming an affiliate? The biggest hurdle or barrier for communities in becoming an affiliate is that we no longer certify with a volunteer executive director, and so one thing that you have to have is you have to have someone who is being paid some amount of money for some amount of time in order to coordinate the program. Doesn't have to be a full-time position. Usually what local governments do is that it becomes a job duty of somebody who is already within the local government structure, either in public works or in parks and recreation, something like that. So really, I just wanted to answer any questions that y'all have. I hope it is something that you will consider, and certainly if there's anything that we can do to help, we're eager to do that. This is such a quickly growing county that I know that y'all are facing challenges that others in the metro area have faced as well, and we'd love to help you address some of those.
Can you speak of some of the successes that you've had with other counties?
Of course. I think one of the things that we are proudest of is that, and I've been with Keep Georgia Beautiful since 2000, and when I started in 2000, 2001, 2002, we do an annual program called the Great American Cleanup, and it's a springtime community cleanup and improvement campaign, and in those first several years, we were collecting about six and a half million pounds of trash during that three-month period. Now, during that three-month period, we get, and I hesitate to even say these numbers out loud, but we get about 80% to 85% less than that every year. We are down now below a million pounds during that three-month period. We're at, last year for the entire year, affiliates collected just two million pounds of trash on Georgia roadways with the same number of volunteers and cleaning the same amount of roadway. And so what that says to us is that over that 15-year period, that focus on behavior change, that consistent strategy in communities has been very, very effective in the communities that have implemented that program year-round. Certainly, I think one of the things about the program is that it is very successful. It started here in Georgia, for y'all that don't know that, the first local affiliate in the country was Macon, Georgia, in 1974, and now there are almost 600 communities nationally and even internationally. There are affiliates in other countries like Canada and the Bahamas and a few other places as well. And so what those communities find is not only that that behavior change methodology is very successful, but that you also gain access to that entire network and all those other communities, those other 600 communities that have faced the same kind of challenges. And so our focus at the state, I'm one-half of the Keep Georgia Beautiful office, there are only two of us in the state office, and our focus is really on providing y'all, local communities, with the technical assistance, resources, information that you need to be successful. And so that's really our role, but I think certainly our expertise is in helping you address whatever issues you want to address. That's one of the things that I think makes the system really unique as well, is that it is very locally driven. You decide what you want to do. There's no program participation requirements, you don't have to have a Great American Cleanup or a Christmas tree recycling program to be an affiliate. Your local group that organizes decides what they want to do and how they want to work, and we just try to provide them the information, the methodology, the strategies to make them successful.
I think trash is a big issue in this county, and I think we do need resources to try to clean it up. I would like to see the program here, and you know, I would like to, you know, I hope the commissioners would support something of this magnitude here in this county, but I would like to see you talk, work with the county manager and see if we can move something forward.
Certainly, and my contact information is in that packet, and you should have a copy of that as well, and so we can follow up on that.
District 4.
Very, very interested in becoming an affiliate. You said we were an affiliate at one time.
You were, yes, and that's been, and I wish I could remember exactly when that has lapsed, but I think it's been at least 10 years since there was an affiliate here. And like I said, it was a weird transition. It went to that private recycler, they were running the program, and then when they went out of business, it just fell off.
You did mention behavioral changes, and I get what you're saying with the public is not littering. How do you reach the public? What methods are you using, and how much are we, you know, tied to this, and what can we do as far as reaching the public?
Sure. So we believe that you have to have education, eradication, and enforcement in order to deal with the litter problem, and I shouldn't say we believe, the data shows. I mean, that's one of the things that I think is really important about Keep America Beautiful. It's a very scientific, very data-driven organization, and so that three-pronged approach means that you do public education. That's typically what is the most visible part of an affiliate's work. I mean, when people think about our affiliates, that's what they think about. They think about Great American Cleanup events, they think about Adopt a Road, they think about all of those kinds of programs, but that's only one piece. Secondly, you have to have some amount of eradication, you have to have some amount of cleanup, and that's because the data is very clear that any litter that exists in your community will breed additional litter. It's like a big neon sign that says this is where your litter goes, and so having those kinds of ongoing cleanup efforts, whether they are volunteer, whether they're using community service workers, whether they're using county employees, whether they're using some combination of all of those things, is really important. And then the third piece is enforcement. Having solid ordinances, making sure that code enforcement is involved and onboard and working is really important. And so that's what an affiliate does, an affiliate helps to coordinate all of those efforts. They also help to coordinate, one of the things that's really important is that you involve all sectors of the community. So that's residents, that's the civic sector, like Kiwanis and Rotary, when you talk about getting the word out, a lot of that happens through the civic sector, churches, schools, all those kinds of groups. It's also businesses and government, and so our affiliate is always charged with bringing all four of those groups to the table in order to develop plans and to work together to decide strategically what they want to do in the community. And so really, that work to me is, while it's less visible to the community, is really where the results happen, and it's really where, when you talk about spreading the word, one of the things we know that is least effective is the idea that we're some way going to talk to the general public about this. We are actually much more effective when we work through existing community organizations. So that's one of the strategies that our affiliates employ is getting all of those stakeholders to the table and really being the connector between all of those groups, so that, for example, if a homeowners' association calls up and says, "We're having a terrible time with litter in our community," then our affiliate is the one who brings the resources to the table to go out and maybe do a cleanup there, to do some public education in the area, to ask enforcement to step up their efforts in that neighborhood for a while to make that more visible, so really to bridge all of those gaps.
Anybody else got any questions?
I think, Chairman, this is a great program, and I look forward to us working with you and try to get this going. We had the Adopt a County Road at one time, and I think it just kind of fizzled out, but it's a great program, and you do have it right. Education is a big part of it, but the enforcement is a major important part of it, is making sure we got that enforcement in place.
That's right. It takes all three of those strategies. That's what we know to be successful.
Yes, sir. District 1.
I'd like to pat one of my citizens that live in my district on the back, Mr. Brown. I think he's adopted our Williams Parkway, and he goes down every, I see him just about every day with a bag and his little things, picking up trash from 42 all the way to Irish Lake and down to Irish Lake, and I'd just like to give him a pat on the back.
That's fantastic. I love that. That's one of the best parts about my job, I get to hear stories about like that all the time about people that care so deeply about their community that they're just out there doing the right thing. Thank you.
Yep, he does a great job. Thank you.
No other comments? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, y'all. Have a great day.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we'll have an update on the Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners of the Board. This morning, the Community Development Department has a brief update of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, in which we are tagging Macon Houses Homes again. What is NSP? NSP was initially created under Title III of the Housing and Economic Development, excuse me, and Economic Recovery Act of 2008. NSP III came along under the Dodd and Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act of 2010, and the Henry County Program has funding of both, NSP I and NSP III. Essentially, NSP is designed to address the national foreclosure crisis through provision of funds to eligible local governments to purchase abandoned and foreclosed properties. In effect, it is to reverse the effects of the foreclosure crisis. Henry County's NSP Program has been focused on the acquisition, rehabilitation, and disposition or sale of foreclosed single-family dwellings to put them back in the homeowner's hands. We also provide down payment assistance, and all of this is for income-eligible home As provided by the state and the federal government, there are priority areas for NSP I and NSP III. This map identifies the red-shaded areas as priorities for NSP I. This map similarly identifies the priorities for NSP III, and it's the yellow-shaded areas. In combination with NSP I and III, the black dots identify where homes have been purchased under the NSP Program throughout the various commissioner districts. An update on home sales and inventory as of yesterday. To date, 374 homes have been purchased under the NSP Program. 335 have been sold. There are currently a total of 39 homes still in inventory. NSP funding. In total of three grants, one from NSP I and two NSP III awards, the county received just under $8 million. Program income, which is the total of sales, is the profit of the sale of homes, has reached beyond $35 million. So in essence, the Henry County NSP Program has turned less than $8 million into a benefit of $35 million-plus dollars. As I mentioned, we currently have 39 homes available for homeowners, and here are a couple pictures as examples of some of the homes that are currently available. We do invite any and all interested home buyers to contact us for additional information, and should you all have any questions, we're happy to respond.
I have a question. How much local county tax money do we have invested in the NSP Program?
NSP reimburses from the purchase, the rehab, and the acquisition of homes all the way to the administrative staff.
What is the dollar amount? For an example, if we was to liquidate this program and pay the federal government back every penny that they had invested, we paid back the state, we satisfied their demand for their money, how much money could we put back in the general funding of Henry County?
I don't have a dollar amount for you at this time, but I'm certain I can work with Fred Alletta, our Finance Director, and we can get a response for that.
Let me share this with you. I had a meeting with the auditor.
Yes, sir.
Several weeks ago, and he indicated that if we satisfied, if we opt out of the program and pay the federal government back every penny that they gave us, satisfied the state, we could put $12.6 million back in the general funding.
I won't be able to speak to that direct dollar amount. My first concern, however, would be the homes that we have in inventory that have already been purchased by the county. I feel that it would be difficult for us to return money until we've sold all of those homes, but I-
That's what I'm saying. Liquidate, that means you'd have to sell them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is the program, we have, apparently, the taxpayer has $12.6 million invested in this program. Now, at what point do we get reimbursed on the local amount that we put in there? Is that after the sale of the home?
Yes, sir.
An individual home?
After the sale of the homes. Unfortunately, sir, until all homes have been sold and have met their affordability period, there may continue to be a balance due to the county because of the continued, I hate to use the word investment, but because we are continuing to administer the program, rehabs homes, and have additional costs. But the high majority of all of those costs are reimbursable. We are currently seeking out reimbursement from both our funders, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and HUD, to get those funding levels due to the county lower, to reduce what's outstanding.
Okay, that's some of the questions I have. Anybody else got any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, public comment, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting, and all persons wished to speak. The public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments. Speak of form, or you will not be recognized. You'll be able to address the board for five minutes. First, we have Mr. Bill Tony. If you would, come to the podium and state your name, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonnell, Georgia. Last meeting I was here, y'all voted. Y'all voted to go forward on Lake Dow. Lake Dow, let me tell everybody, Lake Dow is a private lake. We don't need to be involved. Y'all voted five to one to go ahead and go forward with this thing. Now, the taxpayers have over $56,000 invested in this project. All right, it's a private lake. Mr. Barron, you cannot go over there and go fishing unless you live there. Mr. Holmes, Tommy Smith, Bo, none of you guys can go over there. The citizens can't go over there. Why would we want to get involved in something that don't even pertain to us? It's a maintenance issue. So I hope that when it comes up again, y'all will vote no. Show your, you know, do what you're supposed to do. Vote no. Don't get us involved in it. I've been calling some pretty rough names here lately by citizens, crazies, and everything else. To me, that's third-grade stuff. What I go after, when I'm looking and doing research on the county and what y'all are spending and what y'all are voting on, what y'all are doing, I don't, I don't care who it is. It can be Bruce, it can be Blake, it could be Tommy Smith, it could be anybody. If you're not doing right, you're doing things that's not right, I'll be standing here talking about it. The citizen was talking about corruption in the county. I talked to State Representative John Yates, and he said there's more corruption in this county than any county he's ever seen. It's true, simply because you have things like this going on. You've got a water authority that's run by Lindy Farmer, he's the general manager. In 1994, the man was making $71,000. 2015, he's making $256,000. I went through his pay records, and this, I do this research, I'm not reading the script, I do this research. He gives his own self-races. I've got proof of that from his office. He had, the reasons is annual merit or salary adjustment. How many of you guys can adjust your own salary? You know, I own the company, and I can hardly do it, so y'all really need to look into this. I talked to Lindy Farmer, and he said, "We don't want to get involved with any of that over there." This is not political. It is political. You guys need to be over there taking a look at this thing. You got a lot of problems over there, they're doing whatever they want to do, and they have no oversight. They were having two meetings a month, now they're doing one meeting a month, and I don't know that they took a salary decrease for that. So you guys need to be looking at this stuff. You owe it to the citizens to be looking at it. I hope all these numbers are right, I got them from the county, but anytime anybody's got any questions about anything that I say, if they want me to prove anything that I've done the research- to prove anything that I've, that I've done the research, and I've got all my stuff from the county, and hopefully it's all right. So if they got any questions, please call you guys to ask questions. And I noticed that we got one missing today, that's a long way to Franklin, Tennessee. I guess he didn't make it today. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You should put our emails up as well. Put our emails up along with the numbers, the county emails.
Pardon me?
The county emails, put those up as well.
I'll, I'll do it next to me. Thank you, sir.
Next, we recognize Ms. Carol Baum. She wants to address the Board of Tax Assessment increases of fifty-six percent over, in one year. If you would, come to the podium, state your name, please, and you'll have five minutes.
I'm Carol Baum, and I began living in Henry County at five twenty-eight Gables Court. And it was just the right house. And then about six years later, people were coming through our fences and knocking down the fences, and you couldn't keep them up, and it was really hard to live there and live in peace. Now, I'm a teacher, so I taught for thirty-one years in Ohio, and then I came to be with my grandchildren in Georgia. And while seeing them go through some of the things that they're going through, it was my goal or my aim to provide for them. So I stayed in that house, even though I felt like it wasn't exactly safe. So then I moved over to another, that was two thousand six, I moved over to Heron Bay. And that, on that place, I was over sixty-two, so I had an adjustment on my taxes. And last year, I retired from the schools down here, not, not with very many years, but at least I stopped working because my health was so bad. And I, I'd been very ill the last little while. But when I got my taxes, I came in to ask what they were before it was time to give out the papers. And so then they told me I would have to wait. So I waited, and I forgot about doing the older age, I guess, adjustment to my home that I live in. So that one, I had appealed the year before, and it was pretty fair, I felt like. It was a little high, but probably most of the homes in there were. And then at my five twenty-eight, I had a whole year that I had nothing, and no one in the house. I just let it set. And then the first person I got in, she seemed really nice. She ended up owing me five thousand dollars. And not just that, she came back to the next person who rented the house and told them that her husband died in there, and she wouldn't live in there, to try to scare them off. Then I had trouble with that tenant, and she just filed bankruptcy. And on the bankruptcy, she doesn't have to pay me back the amount that she left, which was two thousand dollars. And even when you go through the court, you can't do that. I know this is not something that you're particularly interested in. But as an individual, if we don't keep fairness in our courts and in our taxes, then there's not going to be anybody around. They'll go to where it is fair. My taxes went from, on my rental property, and half the time you can't keep it rented, my taxes went from fifteen to twenty-three. Fifteen thousand to twenty-three. Now, if you can add and subtract, that's about seven or eight hundred in one year. And the year before that, before the fifteen, it was thirteen. So it was going up gradual. Then all of a sudden, they hit you with an extra seven or eight hundred dollars. And to me, that doesn't seem fair, because I'm not working, I don't have an income, and I saved enough when I was working to take care of me. But if you have your practices so different than mine, then I can't plan on it. What, I could go to forty-six next year, right? And anything you ask about it, in the tax assessor's office, they want an audience. So they start bringing their people out from the back. And pretty soon, if you ask any question or try to talk to them about it, they don't. They are not going to talk about it. I asked to talk about the person, to talk to the person in charge. They wouldn't give me. I asked three or four times, and they wouldn't give me a voice. And to me, that is, that is not an office that I feel like is, helps the customer, helps whoever they're working for. And that's what we're all about, trying to help each other. So I'm hoping that there might be some allowance.
Time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Consent agenda, the following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, the chairman will provide an opportunity to add or delete the items. Public Works Resolution Authorizing the Chair to Sign a Letter of Support Agreement to Provide Electricity and Lighting as Needed or Required in All Maintenance Costs and Landscaping at the Intersection of SR eighty-one U-Morn after the construction. Roundabout is completed. Second one, building and plan review, resolution approving a request for creation of a new streetlight district for Park Point Pod, Unit One, One, Unit Two, and Three subdivision on North Montgomery Road. If, there's no deletions or additions, if somebody move, we accept the consent agenda item as published.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three?
Sen.?
Second District Five, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you. Next, we recognize the Honorable Kelly S. Powell Probate Judge. Have a resolution providing for the appointment of an Associate Judge of the probate. Judge Powell. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. It's been my privilege to serve as the probate judge of Henry County for the last ten years. You may not know that I'm the only, probate court's the only court in Henry County who just has one judge. That means that I am always on call, and I, and I serve with pleasure, but whether I'm on vacation or homesick, then I have to always be available and tied to my BlackBerry. The Code of Georgia allows for the creation of a position of an Associate Judge with the consent of the governing authority, and that's what I'm here to ask for today. Probate judge in our county is different than some other counties, because our, we have a population of ninety thousand people, the probate judge and any associate that might be approved must be an attorney and must have been admitted to the practice of law for seven years. Currently, Ms. Katie Fagan is my chief clerk and staff attorney. She's a native daughter, graduate of Stockbridge High School, and she's a tremendous asset to our court and the county. And I'm pleased to announce that as of tomorrow, she will have been admitted to the practice of law for seven years, and that is why I'm here today. I have asked for the approval of this position. It's not going to require any additional funding to my budget. It is a pay upgrade because of the additional responsibilities, but we've seen some salary savings. We've had some people to retire or to leave my office, and we've seen some salary savings when we've replaced them with some entry-level positions. So the money's already there. I will tell you that it will serve the county well, and it will help me out. It will provide me an opportunity to be away from the office for training or other things, and to have somebody there to make emergency decisions. So I really appreciate that opportunity. Also, when I'm in court, it means that somebody else might consign emergency orders and things. So I'm asking you for the approval of this position, and I'm certainly ready to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners, providing for the appointment of an Associate Judge of the Probate Court.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three?
Sen.?
I got peripheral hearing over here. I have a second from District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a resolution, a resolution for the Henry County Water and Soil and Water Conservation Request additional funding for FY sixteen and to amend the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget, and reason being, in, in order to provide this funding, if the board sees fit, it would take an amendment to the budget, which would be the Third Amendment since you lied the First. So we'll recognize Ms. Amy Wolf Rollins. If you would be so kind as to make the presentation, please. And good morning.
Good morning. My name is Amy Wolf Rollins, and I'm the chairwoman of the Henry County Soil and Water Conservation Commission. We are here today to ask for six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four additional funds for our budget. We have gotten money from the county in the past. We have gotten up to three hundred and thirty, I'm sorry, three thousand three, three hundred dollars, up to year fiscal year eleven. In twelve and thirteen, we didn't get any funds from the county. In the last two years, fiscal year fourteen and fifteen, we got four hundred and fifty dollars. Now, we, yeah. So we are asking for additional funds in your packet. You have a list of items, itemized for that six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. We participate in a bunch of different activities for the county. We do the annual tree giveaway. We support students going to the Envirothon, high school students, scholarships for the National Resource Conservation Workshop, Soil Stewardship Week, where we provide information for the students in all of the schools. We provide scholarship information and scholarship monies for Henry County Regional Science and the Engineering Fair. We have a poster contest on the national level that we support the students to going to. We've supported master gardeners in the past with, with, with funds. Field days and Henry County Gardens, the dues that we have for the Georgia Association and also the National Conservation Association. So the past couple years, we haven't been able to fund as much of these activities as we've liked to because of the lack of funds. Now, we originally asked for this money back in February, before the budget was set. And for some reason, we presented it to the county manager. We've been in contact with Angie and also with Sherry about this, and it didn't make it onto the budget before the budget was approved in May. So that's why we're asking for this addendum of this additional funds.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution for the Henry County Soil and Water Conservation Request additional funding for fiscal year sixteen and to amend the fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget. Somebody want to move in that direction? Have a motion District Three? Second District One. For discussion, I'd like to ask the finance or budget, would this have any impact on this amendment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We will need a budget improvement, a budget amendment done from contingency to contributions to others.
Okay, so the funds are there in the contingency mode?
In contingency, yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you so much. Anybody got more questions, discussion? All in favor, motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Airport, have a resolution awarding an annual contract for the purchase of aviation fuel and the lease of aviation fuel trucks at, Mr. Tony, good morning. Do you bring a sample of fuel with you?
Good morning, Chair and Board. Yes, this, this morning, I have a resolution for you gentlemen to award an annual contract for the purchase of aviation fuel and the lease of aviation fuel trucks. We solicited bids for the purchase of fuel and trucks, and two vendors submitted bids for that. And funds are available in the department to account for this commodity, and we recommend the award or the approval of a unit price contract to Eastern Aviation Fuels for the purchase of the fuel and the lease of the aviation fuel trucks. And just to add to it, that contract would be a one-year term, and we'd have two additional one-year terms if, if they are approved moving forward.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
We have two trucks down there now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are they leased at this time?
They are. In fact, the, the company that, that we have our fuel contract with now, it will wind up being, they are Eastern Aviation, so that it's a seamless operation at this point. There's no change at all for, for anything out there as it stands.
So the person we lead, we buy our fuel from, we lease our trucks from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And so, yes, it remains the same vendor as well.
Any other questions or comments? No, we have a resolution awarding annual contract for the purchase of aviation fuel and lease of aviation fuel trucks.
Would you approve?
Have a motion from District Four. Second from District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a sole-source animal control manager computer program with GIS integrated from ComCate. And we recognize the Director of Animal Control, Jerry, and number two is Vince. How you doing? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Our current animal control records management computer program that we use at Animal Control is antiquated. I'm glad Skip is here this morning, that he can certainly corroborate. The program itself, it's no longer supported due to old technology. It's no longer compatible with our county's operating system and the associated database that the program uses is taking up an enormous amount of space on our county server. Replacement of this program is critical to the operations of the department. This is a budget year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budgeted expenditure. The total amount is thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. And it does include a first-year annual licensing fee. It's seventy-six hundred and fifty dollars. That covers the ongoing support, upgrades, and internet hosting. The program has been vetted by our Technology Services Department. Vince spent about a year going over different programs, trying to find one that was most suitable to us. And the purchasing department as well has vetted this as a sole-source product from ComCate. So this morning, I'm here to request authorization to purchase the animal control manager computer program. It does also have GIS integration, which will help our officers be able to map their areas and also help with routing.
Anybody have any questions? How much would I yield for District Four?
You mentioned the licensing fee this year. Is there an ongoing licensing fee, or is it just this one?
No, sir, it is an ongoing licensing fee. Starting the second year, the annual licensing fee, according to ComCate, would be adjusted by COLA not to exceed five percent a year. This is an internet-based program, which would take all our database off the county server. So the licensing fee is for technical support, it's for ongoing training, and it's also for internet hosting for the, for our database.
Okay, and Skip's been over this with all them, and?
Yes, sir.
We can work together?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This has been declared a single source.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comment? He answered my question, so that's why I'm going to have a question. He, he asked it, and you answered it. We have a resolution in the book, authorizing the purchase of animal control manager computer program for the Henry County Animal Care and Control Department. Have a motion District Five, Second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good morning.
Now, we're coming under the splash, resolution awarding bid for the construction of Fire Station Number Two, Locust Grove, Georgia, using budgeted splash for funds. Wrong.
Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. The voters of Henry County approved the splash for referendum, which included funds for the replacement of Fire Station Number Two in Locust Grove. Purchasing department solicited bids for the construction of Fire Station Number Two and posted bid number sixteen dash twenty-one on the website of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG slash GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Eight vendors responded. Attached to the resolution is the bid tabs of the eight vendors. The most responsive low-base bid came from J.R. Bowman Construction Company of McDonough, Georgia, in the amount of $1,653,000. No alternates were chosen. The Splotz Department is recommending the award of the bid to construct Fire Station Number Two, which is SP 4101, to J.R. Bowman Construction Company, in the amount of $1,653,000, using budgeted Splotz IV funds. If you have any questions?
Anybody got any questions? Don't we have the funds available now to where we can? Isn't this shovel ready?
Yes, sir. The shovel ready.
Okay. Hadn't been shovel-ready for a while, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions or comments?
I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
We're moving dirt. I'm very happy.
Moving dirt. Okay, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for construction of Fire Station Number Two, Locust Grove, Georgia, using Splotz IV funds and I yield to Florida District One. So move. Move and approve. Have a motion District One. Second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, Board.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Question, Fire Station in Kellytown. Where are we at on that?
It's currently in design. It's ninety, it's... Commissioner, I'm going to say it's 90% complete as far as the design.
We haven't submitted it yet to the county?
The Civs have been submitted.
The Civil?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Time frame, rough guess?
The design will be complete and the review process within, before the first of the year.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Any more questions? Thank you. Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. This one's in the audience. Would we ask him if he'd like to make a comment?
I don't think he would.
No. You're welcome to make a comment if you like. I just figured you wouldn't. Thank you. Okay. Resolution approving bid award for Engineering Services for the Peakville Road, New Hope to Bridge, and Peakville Road Bridge to Old Jackson, District One. Rocky, good morning again.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. This is actually two design projects, both on Peaksville. The first one is Peaksville Road from New Hope to the Bridge, and Peaksville Road from the Bridge to Old Jackson. That's the south section of the road of Peaksville. Both projects are approved by District One's Splotz IV projects. Peaksville Road from New Hope to Bridge was approved to commence on the year 2014 and 2015 as per Resolution Number 14262. Peaksville Road from Bridge to Old Jackson was originally scheduled for the year 2016. Staff recommends approval of Peaksville Road from the Bridge South towards Old Jackson project to commence this year 2015. Purchasing Department is an invitation to bid for shortlisted firms for the Splotz-funded transportation projects. Dirt Roads bid number 16-25 for the design services of both Peaksville Road from New Hope to the Bridge and from Peaksville Bridge to Old Jackson. Four sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for design services is available in the project budgets. The lowest bid is $88,025 for Peaksville Road from New Hope to the Bridge and $126,375 from Peaksville Bridge to Old Jackson, from Heath and Lineback Engineers. Staff recommends award for both Peaksville to Heath and Lineback.
Anybody got any questions? I yield for District One.
Hey, Rocky, these projects were moved up about a year?
The second Peaksville, from the Bridge to Old Jackson, is a design only. Since we already wanted to work on the first section, might as well include the second phase as well.
Okay, so we're on course. Okay. Thank you.
If not, we have a resolution in the book of the Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for Engineering Design Services for Peakville Road, New Hope to Bridge, and then Peakville Road Bridge to the Old Jackson Road.
Move and approve.
Have a motion District One. Second District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Resolution approving bid award for Engineering Design Services for Bridges and Covets Repair Location, District One.
Yes, Chairman. District One has one culvert repair and three bridge repairs on their Splotz IV list. King Mill over Tosa Ha Creek is the culvert repair. Locust Grove over Indian Creek is a bridge repair. Old Jackson Road over Tosa Ha Creek is a bridge repair. And South Ola over Tosa Ha Creek is a bridge repair. All approved District One's Splotz IV projects. District One culvert and bridge projects were originally scheduled for the year 2018. Staff recommends approval of these projects to commence on the year 2015. Purchasing Department is an invitation to bid for shortlisted firms plus funded transportation project bridges. Bid number 16-22 for design services of the bridges and culvert repairs located in District One. Four sealed bids were received and reviewed, and the lowest bid is $25,000 from Arcadas U.S. Inc. With available cash from the District One McDonough Parkway Project on fiscal year 2015 balance, staff is requesting to begin this project ahead of original schedule and award the bid for design services of bridges and culvert repairs located in District One to Arcadas U.S. Inc. in the amount of $25,000.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Having none, have a resolution approving bid award for Engineering Design Services for Bridges and Covets Repairs located in District One. I yield to Florida District One.
Move and approve.
Have a motion District One. Second from District Three. Any further discussions, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. So move. Resolution question to bid award for Engineering Design Services of Selfridge Road Bridge Replacement. Exhibit number 10. Yes, sir.
Good morning again, Chairman and Board Members. Selfridge Road Bridge Replacement is an approved District Four Splotz IV project. Purchasing Department is an invitation to bid for the shortlisted firms Splotz-funded Transportation Project Bridges. Bid number 16-23 for the design services of Selfridge Road Bridge Replacement. Three sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for design services is available in this project budget. The lowest bid is $184,900 from AECOM Technical Services. Staff recommends awarding the bid designed for the Selfridge Road Bridge Replacement to AECOM for the amount specified.
Anybody having a discussion or comments? Yes, sir, District Four.
Rocky, the bridge out on Selfridge Road, there was some structural concerns in the past. If those been abated, and, I mean, do we need to fast-track this, or are we good with where we're at on that bridge, or what's going on?
I think we're good in the sense that we have stare at 155, all because of the rains.
Yeah.
They may know a little bit more than that.
Rocky didn't know I was going to do this, so if that's...
That's okay.
...was a look on his face. It might not be a bad idea. Yesterday, that road did overtop about six inches, and we did have to close it. I didn't think about talking to Rocky this morning, kind of preparing for that. But it might be a good idea. We couldn't really do an inspection on it until the water goes down. So I don't know what I've got out there until we check it out today and see. High probability, though, that we may have to fast-track this.
We'll fast-track it.
Okay. Fast-track it. Let's make it happen.
Any other questions or comments? No, we have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for Engineering Design Services, Selfridge Road. Somebody move in that direction?
Move and approve.
Have a motion for District Four. Second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Purchasing, Resolution Awarding Proposal for Occupational Medical Services. Mr. Gray, good evening, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The item I have for you this morning is a request for an award for a proposal for occupational medical services. These services are required to include pre-employment physicals, post-accident physical exams, drug alcohol testing, and fitness for duty exams. Proposals were solicited. We received two, and an evaluation committee reviewed and scored the proposals. Caduceus Occupational Medicine was determined to be ranked with the highest score. The Evaluation Committee recommends an award of RFP number 1616 to Caduceus Occupational Medicine for Occupational Medical Services as a unit price agreement with no fixed quantities for one year with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. Funding for these services is allocated within the various departmental budgets.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Is this business close to where we need them to be?
Yes, sir. It met all the requirements geographically, and it's very close to this office.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners awarding a proposal for occupational medical service.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five. Second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Resolution award bid for janitorial services.
Yes, sir. Sealed bids were solicited. Qualified professional janitorial service providers to provide services, including but not limited to management monitoring provision of high-quality janitorial cleaning and custodial services at Henry County facilities listed in the exhibit. Seventeen bids were received. Sugar and Spice Cleaning of Lithonia, Georgia submitted the lowest overall bid, as shown on the bid tabulation. The recommendation is to award an annual contract to Sugar and Spice Cleaning for five days of janitorial services, which includes supplies listed in the bid at a cost of $101,640 per year. This will be a one-year agreement with two mutually agreed-upon extensions. Funding for this is available within the various departments' budgets.
Well, that's a highly bidable commodity, seventeen people, seventeen companies bid.
Yes, sir.
We have a resolution, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for janitorial services for county facilities. If somebody would consider moving in that direction, I have a motion District Three. Second for District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Resolution question, approval of a budget amendment for FY 2014, 2015. The Budget Director, Angie Sora. Good morning.
Good morning again, Board. Before you have a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2014, 2015, this is our year-end budget amendment. We need to amend the budget periodically so that we do not show any variances in the funds or the accounts. We have the general fund of $1.164,789. Law Library of $99,429. NSP, $7,752,988. NSP Grant, $3,721,717. CDBG Grant, a decrease of $170,589. Confiscated assets, $1,288,400. Drug court, $39,980. 911, $507,817. Grant fund is $1,007,529. Special revenue is $563,072. Technology fee is $34,039. Juvenile assistance is $29,440. Development authority is $151,563. Hotel motel, $168,646. Henry First is $5,820. Capital asset is $56,301. Impact fee is $7,49860. Debt service is $20,179,268 decrease. And stormwater is $1,114,947. And airport is $249,598. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I only have one at the moment.
Okay.
I know we hadn't had the audit for the budget year, but do we have a ballpark figure how much we might be over at the end of the year?
The audit is currently in the process. They're hoping to be done. With this amendment being approved, they're hoping to be done by Thanksgiving, but we're looking to between six and seven million.
Over.
Over.
Okay, that answers that question.
How are expenses?
If you look down to stormwater, it said $1,114,947, and it says the same as increased revenue expenditures. I get that. But that one says use of fund balance.
Reduce the fund balance.
Okay, was used to reduce the fund balance, or was that...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We collected revenues, and we reduced the fund balance.
Okay. So we're looking somewhere between six and seven, hopefully at the end of the audit cycle. Okay. Having said that, we have a resolution in the book that Board of Commissioners regarding a budget amendment for fiscal year 2014, 2015. If somebody moving in that direction? Have a motion District Three. We have a second. I'm looking, second from District Four. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much. County Manager, Resolution of Board of Commissioners regarding a lease agreement with the Georgia Department of Human Resources, Sherri Matthews. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members. The resolution before you is a lease agreement with DFAX. As you all are currently aware, DFAX currently leases a 38,000-square-foot building located at 125 Henry Parkway, and this is just their yearly renewal.
Anybody have any comments or questions? No, we have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners regarding a lease agreement with the Georgia Department of Human Services Division of Family and Children. If somebody moving in that direction?
Move and approve.
Have a motion District Three. Second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. of unincorporated areas of Henry County City of Locust Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me give you a short version of what this is really about. The city of Locust Grove is intending to annex a number of parcels, nearly 200 parcels. I don't know exactly how many. And they're going to do it by the annexation method that we call resolution and referendum, which means that the city will adopt a resolution calling for a referendum of the voters within the area to be annexed, to vote on whether or not they wish to be annexed into the city. That's one of the methods of annexation the legislature allows. So what will happen is after the city provides the proper notice and conducts the proper public hearings at the next election, whenever that may be, and I'm not sure when that's planning, is it going to go on March 1st? On March 1st, there will be a referendum, a ballot question, for those residents living within the area to be annexed, and it will say something along the line of, should your property be annexed into the city limits of the city of Locust Grove? And they'll vote yes or no. If a majority of those people vote yes, then they'll be annexed. If they don't, then if a majority vote no, they won't be annexed, and then they won't be allowed to annex anything within that area for two years. So it's completely up to the voters whether or not to annex it. The reason it's before you is the Georgia Code that calls for resolution referendum method has a provision that requires the city and the county to enter into an agreement regarding services, where the services, where there are services in the area to be annexed provided by this county. And presently, because it's within the unincorporated area of the county, we provide our services, police, fire. They get their water from the Water and Sewerage Authority. After the annexation, the city is required to enter into a plan to start providing services. Obviously, fire will continue to be provided through an intergovernmental agreement, because we provide fire service. Police services, they'll transfer those over. The city police will begin to provide police services, water and sewer... The water, either, they'll either enter into an agreement with the Water Authority, or they'll arrange where they transfer the water to the city water. So that's all you're being asked to do today, is to enter into an agreement saying that this is how services, this is the existing way the services are, and go have your referendum. So the voters will be answering this question. This isn't like a lot of the annexations we saw throughout the '90s and the early 2000s, where the city was... saw throughout the '90s and the early 2000s where the city was going out and grabbing land and pulling land in. This will be left entirely up to the voters. And all you're doing is adopting this resolution, entering into this agreement, which will allow the city to move forward. Mr. Warren Tillery is an attorney at Smith Welch Web and White. He represents the city of Locust Grove. If you have any specific questions about the annexation, the land, that I can't answer, he's happy to answer for you.
Anybody got any questions? District One?
We have an approximate amount of acreage.
Sorry, Warren Tillery here for Locust Grove. I don't have a specific acreage. At this point, we have a surveyor who is looking at that. It's one of the requirements for the annexation and would be completed by the meeting on this. So the Georgia Code also requires after the city adopts a resolution stating its intent to consider the annexation, there's then a notice and a meeting and a public hearing for the people who will ultimately decide whether this should be annexed, and that'd be the voters who reside in that area. But just to give you a little bit of a reference, if you took Locust Road, excuse me, on the east side, and then came back to LG Griffin Road on the west along 42, it's that little odd-shaped area that is still kind of surrounded on three sides, a peninsula shape by the city already. And as a practical matter, although county, the county does provide services in that area, through intergovernmental agreement, the city provides mutual aid through police services and other things of that manner. So it'd really just be more question for the voters.
Historically, what happened, if I recall correctly, and I didn't go back and look at any records, but I remember this property coming up for an annexation, early 2000s probably, and the city was going to annex it, I believe, by the 60% method, which required 60% of the property owners to sign an application. And I want to say they gave the count, that we got notice of it, and it fell apart after that. I may be wrong about that, but there was some activity about annexing that years ago. And I think what happened honestly is property got subdivided. There's a portion of a subdivision that's within this area to be annexed, and it is, it's just really hard to get people in a neighborhood to sign a petition or sign an application. And it is, for all practical purposes, it's not an island. Y'all don't need to know all the details about annexation, but you can't annex and create an unincorporated island. And this is not an island, but it's almost an island. It is as close to an island probably as you can get without it actually being an island. So from a map standpoint, this annexation does make sense. It'll take an area that sort of loops way in and close that area up. You know, there was a period of time when the annexations were really property owner-driven. A property owner wanted to be annexed, and the property owners in the cities would sometimes go to great lengths to try to draw those annexation maps so that they could annex. But this piece of property meets all the technical requirements for annexation. There's a number of technical requirements. I won't go through them all, but a certain amount of contiguous area, has to be a certain density of population and things like that. This appears to meet all those requirements.
Just to make it clear, the people that live in the area to be annexed will be the only ones able to vote for the referendum?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Would that be the 60-40 or 50-plus-one?
No, this is 50%. This is a straight-up election. So what'll happen is they will, those registered voters that reside within that area will cast a ballot, and if 50% plus one say yes, they get annexed.
Okay.
If it's less than that, and I guess it depends on the number of people that actually vote.
Right, it's just a simple majority.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's a majority, but it's the voters making an election, making the decision at an election.
Let me ask you this. This thing has been changed by legislation so many times. In the beginning, a county could object and would have to go, jump through some loops. And then later, it doesn't, it didn't matter whether the county objected or not, that it would go ahead and take forward. But just out of curiosity, reading some of these OCGAs in the 36th section, if this board says, no, we're not going to waiver that, or we're not going to agree to that, just I don't, I don't see us not doing that, but I'm just saying, what would be the consequences?
Well, I don't know. I think there is a judicial resolution to these at some point, but mechanically, how we get there, I'm not sure. We do have the right to object if there's a change in land use, if there's a change in zoning. We have a right under both the Georgia law and our local stuff to object if they're going to change zoning at the same time as they're annexing the property or within a certain period of time, but that's not, I'm sorry.
I think, I think the way the law used to be, they had to maintain that same zoning for at least a year. Was that language?
Or they have to give you notice and give you an opportunity to object. They've not given us notice of a rezoning, and they're, I'm guessing there won't be a rezoning on this because most of this property's already developed and in use.
Yeah, and Chairman, to your point there about objecting to the annexation, some of that stuff comes even later. The way that this process would play out in the short term is the county would adopt its consent to it, and then once the city adopted its resolution to consider the annexation, it would then have to go through the process of providing notice to the county, which at that point, you could object. But again, if you're consenting to it now, that probably wouldn't be necessary. This is simply the only thing really related to this resolution is whether the city can adopt its resolution. It's not, you know, whether the annexation's going to take place or...
Let me ask you this. Since you represent Locust Grove, how, this is just a curiosity question. Reason I'm quizzing you about this, I may want to be a mayor one day, and I want to look at it from the other side. But if, how does the governing body determine that this would be feasible to, do they have petitions from a certain amount of people? Normally, you've got a developer, if he wants an address, 100%. I'm familiar with that, and then we go back to the 60-40 percent, and then they had to petition certain things, but now it's, I'm just, how did Locust Grove, they didn't just wake up and said, okay, we want to annex this. They might have had a plan. So is this something that you think I would know that was initiated by the citizens in that area that wanted that, or is this something that we just don't know?
I would be purely speculating, but I would imagine that people had reached out to their representatives there at the city to initiate it.
Okay.
But it could, Mr. Chairman, it could have been, and I'm not suggesting this was the case here, but under the resolution referendum method, the city could just wake up one morning and decide to annex and go through this process. There is no requirement under this method. Right, there's no requirement under this.
Normally, somebody has a rhyme or reason. They don't just wake up, like you said, I don't, I guess they do, but you have to have two or three on the board down there to wake up and want to do that.
Right, and there is a requirement, Mr. Chairman, under this method. The city prepare a report of how they're going to treat these new, these new areas when they annex. They're required to prepare a report about public services and all of those things. And it's a fairly detailed report they have to prepare, and it has to be produced, I think, before they conduct any public hearings. So there will be a substantial amount of stuff the city is required to do to inform those citizens within that area what's going to happen. It probably doesn't exist today. I'm willing to bet they haven't completed all that because they probably want to make sure this steps gets finished.
I yield the floor to District One.
I have one question to add of curiosity. I know there's a church in that area that's going to be annexed. Who represents them in a vote?
They wouldn't have a vote. It's only resident electors. It's only the individuals who live there and vote there. And in order to take care of that situation, the law has a requirement that I think you have to be, I know there's a requirement, you have to be two residents per acre, which is sort of an urban requirement. And I think there's also a requirement, it has to be at least 60% residential or maybe even more than that. But the idea is you can't go annex by this method a whole bunch of vacant land and get three voters. You've got to have, the focus of these types of annexation is residentially occupied property, and it has to be relatively high density as well. So that's how that issue was dealt with under the law.
Just my curiosity. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Not have a resolution to consent to a referendum regarding annexation of certain properties in unincorporated Henry County and to the city of Locust Grove, Georgia to approve an agreement with said city regarding said annexation to authorize the chairman to execute documents and effectuate this resolution and for other purposes. Does somebody move in that direction? Move to approve. Have a motion in District One. Second District Three, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Approval of the minutes, October the 6th, 2015. Somebody move, we approve that as minutes as published. So move. Have a motion, District Three.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Chairman has no comments. I will start then over here, District Four. You have any comments? Yes, sir.
The intersection of North Mosley Road and 138, just an update on that one. Talked to GDOT yesterday, and the T study's been completed, and it's been sent from the Thomston Office to the Atlanta Office, and as soon as we hear something back, we will let the constituents in that area know.
Okay, thank you. District One?
I'm good, thank you.
District Three?
No comment.
District Five? Okay. I'm going to yield the floor to County Manager comments. County Managers recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I have several items that we will be advancing on the next agenda, hopefully, that has been kind of languishing on the back burners as we're, as they like to say. First is the Gateway Project. I've sent out a number of emails on it. This is a project, the airport, that we currently can't accommodate because of the lease proposal is beyond the period that the Board can approve. So we're going to ask the Board to consider the mechanism that would allow the lease to be extended beyond the one-year periods, perhaps the vehicle that you will choose to do. And if you would be interested, after we get that decision made, with a proposal that Gateway will be presenting then. So it's a kind of a two-step thing, but I can't get the cart before the horse. You have to decide who's going to do the leases, if we're going to go beyond the one year, and then if you want to consider a proposal from the Classic Cars Group. I've indicated to them that they will have an opportunity to speak, and I'll assemble all the documents that are salient to the issue before the Board this week and try to get any questions you may have answered before then. We're going to need to schedule a roof workshop, changing gears. As you're aware, we have a number of leaks, and every time it rains, we learn about some more of them. But Mr. Purvis has come up with a prioritized list, and there's some other professionals on board who are evaluating the roof structures. This roof's been looked at. I believe there's a total of 17 or so roofs that are in need of some consideration now. We're going to try to prioritize them. The first one up, which has been deemed an emergency for Mr. Purvis, is the DFAX building. We have a pretty good proposal coming for you that explains the various options from a simple fix to a more comprehensive fix to a total re-roof with all new things on top. We'll give you the analysis of how we arrived at it. We've got a couple of speakers who will give you engineered, as well as a technical recommendation about how to approve of that. But gentlemen, that's at a big expense right now. The minimum would be a few hundred thousand dollars. The outside would be right at a million dollars. And we don't have this in construction dollars, so it would be a budget amendment. So at the same time we're talking about that project, we'll also be bringing you the funding mechanisms and the changes necessary to have that funding in place to go forward. I think that ought to be a workshop, if you're not so inclined, or we don't have the scheduling for it. We're going to schedule it to be on the Board's agenda next. It's a pressing issue. We're losing ground in terms of the water that's going in the buildings, just going to get more expensive over time. So this will be the first one out of the box. We have some compliance issues that have come to our attention at the airport. Michael and I are working through a couple of the contracts. We're going to try to assemble all the documents in one place where they need to be, making certain that everything has been brought over from the previous owner to Henry County Airport as it exists today. Updating the contracts, getting everything in line with our current policies, then we can see if the rates are correct, if the leases are correct, are we doing everything we should be, are there any compliance issues out there? And we know we've got a few of them, but we'll be addressing those, and don't know if that'll be on the agenda, but it'll be something you'll see working through the next couple of weeks. Our procurement department has come up with some strategies, but the first one is that we have a requirement from the state to adopt a P-card policy for the elected officials. We've got the legislation. I think the county attorney has looked at it. We're going ahead and formalize it. It has to be done by year-end. We just want to get this one out of the way. It'll be on your next agenda. Essentially tells you what you can buy and can't buy, and as I've told you folks about, do you use a P-card? Most of you said you got them hidden in a vault someplace, but it'll make it a little bit easier if you understand how you can use it and when you can use it. Now segueing into those other procurement changes, we've assembled, Mr. Gray assembled quite a team. We've had a couple of good meetings regarding some procurement and policy changes that will streamline the ability for us to be able to use a P-card, use the other purchasing mechanisms we have in place, and capture the information that's necessary to transact, follow that transaction from cradle to grave. So we'll be more compliant. We'll make certain that the procedure's in place, and it'll be streamlined in a way that's more user-friendly to the people who use it the most, and that's our staff. Mr. Gray's done a great job of that. The staff came up with some excellent ideas during the meeting. Everybody contributed. It's the kind of thing I want to see across the Board, where we involve the people who are using the services to guide our steps on what's next. So kind of excited about that, kind of a big initiative off the table for us, and looking forward to get that in front of you. I'm asked to meet with some of the commissioners today. We've got some budget amendments that Commissioner Holmes and I are working on for a construction project, and I'd like to give you all the details as we know them right now, how we got here, because it will require a budget amendment. It will be on the next agenda, and I want to share with you what my thoughts are. Certainly Commissioner Holmes has got some info on Rocky, and I met with Commissioner Holmes up in the district on Friday, I believe it was, and we've got a plan that has reduced the cost of the, these overruns or these budget amendments that are coming out. So we'll, I want to talk to a couple of commissioners, if you're available afterwards at the meeting. I'd sure like to gather you up, give you the details, and like Commissioner Holmes and I share with you where we're at on that. The clinic update, as you know, we had to table it, and I think, and I'm meeting with Mr. Gases and the representatives of the clinic on Thursday to kind of go over some issues that have come up since I've gotten here and since staff has had an opportunity to review the contract. Commissioners, I think the issue is that the agreement and different components of the agreement were scattered all over the place, and no one had actually reviewed the agreement. And once I sit down with it, I started calling y'all and getting your emails to you, but at 9:30 last night, I had to pull the plug on this. It just wasn't right for us today. And to all fairness, I called Mr. Gases at some ungodly hour this morning, and he called me right back. We're going to meet and try to iron out what details that have come up and consolidate all these things that this project is. It's an important project, but in all consciousness, I certainly wanted to have the opportunity to get a good understanding on, and again, using the user group that's going to be responsible for implementing these kinds of policies, I wanted them to have some say-so about where we're going, and it has guided my steps to say, wait a minute, I need to wait a little bit. So we're going to have to change the date. We won't be opening up on the 9th. Ms. Matthews is clawing all that back right now, and as we get that schedule cleared up Thursday and I have a better understanding, I'll certainly coordinate with the Attorney's Office and each one of the Board of Commissioners, as well as Cigna, to make sure we got a project we can live with and go forward. See any questions about any of this so far? Okay. The voter registration building and elections building, you saw the email, tomorrow I'll go before their elections board at 1:00 and explain just what's happening and why we're making a decision to keep them in place through the current election cycle. There was a mailing notice that it had to change. The building that we were looking at as maybe relocate before the elections cycle starts, and she, supervisor election was telling us that we had to be in there by the first week of December, and there was no scenario that I could put together that was practical for us to have them located, even with extraordinary expenses. The first one was $85,000 mailing notice. Then there was rent. There was lease. There was construction issues in the other areas. So I went down and talked to the election supervisor, explained my circumstance to her. She asked me to be present in front of the Board, but that election building will be occupied for the election for the current cycle until we can come up with a place to relocate them permanently. Regrettably, a small, but we do have the right people developing an MOT, a Management of Traffic Plan. We're going to do some restriping. We're going to have to have some personnel on site, utilizing their people inside to know how many folks might be circulating through that parking lot. We may even man it with some traffic control people and put some devices, just to make it so folks don't have the traffic congestion that she's expecting there. Big elections coming up next year, so we're working hard on that one, but unfortunately, the buildings that's, you've seen the results of the other building analysis that we've had, there was just no chance I was going to be able to move them before their deadline. So we pulled the trigger on it, and again, I'm meeting with the Board tomorrow, and I'll let you know my results are, but at this point in time, through foreseeable future, till we get another... time, through foreseeable future, till we get another location, they'll, they have to stay resident in the building they're in. Um, last night, for the first time, I, it wasn't me that set the alarms off in the building. We had some nine-one-one calls, and, uh, I get a call from Mr. Floyd, and he says that McDonough police are outside the building. You want to be careful if you're still inside the building. Don't know why, but the phone right out here in the lobby started calling nine-one-one and hanging up with a child's voice on it. Could have been the rain, cause we had some entry of rain into this building from some terrainian sources yesterday, uh, but I was glad for one time it wasn't me that set the alarms off in here late at night. Um, I have continued on with going across the departments. I made pretty good headway. I've, uh, gone through PD. I only have one other afternoon to spend at the police department, and that would be to go through the simulation rooms, uh, the fire department. I've been to most of the departments. Um, the chief and I have about another half day to wind up there, and then I'll be, uh, moving on to some other folks. Parks and Recs is up next the following week, but I've been through the clerk's office. I've been through the sheriff's jail. We've been through code enforcement, development review, procurement, uh, budget and finance department. So I'm making headways, going out and meeting these folks and saying hello, and I'm getting some strong contributors who are stepping up the plate and helping me see, uh, where we need our next steps to be for you. If you have any questions, uh, for the County Manager, I'm here before you.
Thank you. County Attorney, you have any comments?
Nothing tonight, today.
Okay. Upcoming meetings and events, November the seventeenth at six thirty PM is a regular meeting, December the first at nine AM is a regular meeting. Uh, executive session, I understand we need to go into executive session. Uh, do we have any acquisition of real estate? Counsel.